And you're late.
Not yet.
I'm one.
It's still ten.
Okay. Do you want me to reread that?
No.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the special meeting of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District. The purpose for this meeting is hiring a manager and a secretary treasurer and setting each salary of each person. And the reason I mention secretary treasurer is because that job was open also, and you have somebody who's probably going to accept it. So, but everything being said. The roll call of the Board of Supervisors, President Supervisors Jim Bradford, Chairperson Jennifer Finazzo, Vice Chair Supervisor John Solucci, Attorney Richard Pringle, Engineer Ron Edenfield, Secretary Treasurer Chris Lawson. And I want to thank Jennifer Finazzo for all of her hard work and time and effort and the endeavors that she has put into the interviewing and bringing forth whatever applications. Everybody here did have the opportunity to be interviewed by Jennifer and have the oversight with the job was about one person did that. Does everybody have a copy of the job description here on the board? Nice. Everybody got the job?
Yep.
Let's go back.
Okay. Everybody have one Audrey's applications?
Do you have one, Mr. Edenfield?
No.
I'll get it for you.
Over here, I've got an extra one.
Thank you.
At this point?
Uh huh.
Mr. Pringle?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items for the record. First, this is a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the district. It was properly noticed in the news press at least seven days in advance of the hearing. I'll send a copy of the notice over to Ms. Lawson to attach to the meeting record. The purpose of the special meeting today is indicated in the notice was to discuss the two positions of Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent of Works. Is generally a reference or manager is the other reference that is commonly used for the second position and to take any and all other matters that may come before the board. That's language that I use to generally just open the door for you to do other things that may come up while you're discussing this topic. So you're properly noticed, there's a statute that covers, three statutes that cover these groupings of work for the district. They are all in Chapter 298. 298.14 and .15 describes the duties of the secretary, and that's essentially to keep the district's records, including the meeting records and all of the public records of the district and to maintain those as required by law. 298.17 describes the duties of the treasurer. They are more lengthy, more detailed, up to and including a requirement that this treasurer be bonded. And the treasurer essentially keeps and maintains and manages the financial records and also the financial activities of the district, the receipt of the assessments from the tax collector, the payment of the bills and/or the preparation of the payment of the bills for the Board of Supervisors to approve. Those are all part of the roles of the treasurer. And then the third position that you're discussing is described in Chapter 298.19 of the Florida statutes, and that's the Superintendent of Plant and Operations and which you refer to as the manager of the district. That position is also described by a statute, 298.19. Within the parameters of those statutes, Mr. Chairman, you can describe the job duties and responsibilities of those positions as long as you stay within that framework of the statute. And so that's essentially where you are today. If we get somewhere beyond the statutory framework, I'll let you know. But otherwise, the board has the authority solely in the hands of the board to describe the job duties and responsibilities of the positions and then to make the selection of either employees, I think is what we have been doing in the past. And/or what you have with many of your other positions is they are performed by independent contractors. And that may be a topic beyond the scope of today's discussion and the time that you have, but I think when you get right down to it, you could probably have either one of those two arrangements apply. And if you're gonna go, and I assume you're gonna go with the employment route, then you would need to make sure that you discuss whether it's full-time or part-time and whether there are any other benefits that may apply other than the salary. And I don't think there are any other benefits. And then the full-time or part-time and the salary range would all be things that the board would set.
You mentioned the topic of contract employees.
Independent contractors.
Independent contractors in lieu of an actual employee.
It can be either way.
How does that fit differently?
Well, it can be either way. If the positions are employee positions, then they are... First of all, we would have to make sure that we address and keep records of all the social security and the other parts that go with employees. Ms. Chris has done that the whole time that she's been here, and so she's got all that under control as the treasurer. There is, as an independent contractor, there would be a difference in the liability of the district related to the actions of an independent contractor versus an employee of the district. In both cases, you're protected by sovereign immunity. With an employee, you have, the biggest distinction is you have the ability to control when they work, where they work, and how they work, and you tell them, this is when you will work, this is how you will work, this is when you will work. With an independent contractor, by comparison, you'll say, here's what you're gonna do, and we expect that you're gonna get this done every week. And then they control the hours when they do the work.
So that would be more like hiring Tony's Lawn Service?
Yes, or Mr. Edenfield, or Mr. Pringle.
Okay. I think we're beyond that.
Yes, so it's more, it's a more flexible... No. Yes, more flexible in that you say, here's what you're gonna do, this is the obligation. If you do that at two o'clock in the morning, that's your choice, but this is the obligation. You shall complete this job this week. Or, you know, but in terms of saying you're gonna come in at nine o'clock and you're gonna be here until five o'clock, or you're gonna come in at three o'clock and you're gonna be here until six o'clock. That's an employment arrangement where you set those hours and describe those types of parameters. Those are not present with an independent contractor.
Can I add a little bit?
Sure.
Can I make a comment real quick?
You may.
Twenty plus, well, seventeen plus years ago, there's been a fine line definition with employees versus independent contractors and the definition of it. And it was, we were basically essentially told way back when that the jobs, even though they may appear as an independent contractor mold, are actually employees and should be treated as employees and therefore withholding and all of the federal employment taxes should be coming out of it. So I think you gotta be, walk a fine line when dealing with trying to navigate, is this an independent contractor or is this an employee?
I would make a comment that based on the responsibilities and the activities that I've seen from requests from the engineering firm, from Chris, and just generally the board, I would have a very difficult time seeing this position as a 1099 only
Independent contractor.
As an independent contractor. Because it's an ad hoc almost scenario. Something's going on, check on this permit, check on this inspection, I need to do it now at three o'clock, but you're a nurse over at the VA, you say, look, my shift is on over to four, I'll get there at four and look at it. How are we gonna have the communication back and forth as an independent contractor when really your responsibilities and duties would be much more like a part-time employee? That's my quick analysis of what I'm hearing.
Okay, then I'm gonna go back to the way the board has always operated in the past. It's always treated both that job and this job, secretary job and treasurer job, as a job-based function and as opposed to a position with stated hours and times and locations. It's been a matter of getting the job done as opposed to being at a certain place at a certain time necessarily. And sometimes you have to be at a certain place at a certain time, but it's not been the traditional employee role.
And it's my understanding too that the manager can also appoint an overseer. So if they have another responsibility or another situation with regards to time constraint or something like your opinion of like, go pick up this permit at three o'clock, that they can have an overseer do that.
Is the board then responsible for paying that overseer? You know, it's one thing to do it once a month, it's another thing to do it two times a week.
The anticipation is that the overseer would be somebody that the district would pay. So the distinction between an employee and an independent contractor is very, very blurred. It's, and oftentimes you can call a position, an independent contractor position or an employee position, and nobody ever says anything. It's really not until, oftentimes not until a matter of litigation occurs that the distinction between the two really arises and has to be determined. So the ability to call the position an employment position is something that if you say, I want to exercise, this is what I think it comes down to. If you say, I want to, I, the board, want to exercise a substantial amount of control over timing, over function, then an employee is more the role to go toward.
Yeah.
Because you have better, you have more control in that title than you do in an independent contractor.
I think to answer that question and the changing going on with the subdivision and the growth and stuff going on, the building and things that are going on out here at this point in time, I think the board has to have more control over the manager's position to change it as need be and to dictate what roles that manager will play and what the needs are going to be in the future. No different than when we had the hurricane that occurred. All of a sudden, the manager needed to be almost a full-time person and needed to be very proactive in everything that was going on after the hurricane. Before the hurricane, there are minor things that need to be taken care of and done such as opening the water control gate that's available out here. And if in the future we have more of those, that'll all be under the manager's position. But I think that the board needs to have more control over the manager's position. So my opinion is I think we should go with...
Yes, sir. If the goal is to have that higher degree of control, then yes, sir.
Hiring the manager.
As an employee.
Having him as an employee.
Yeah, having him as a part-time employee, I would cut.
Yes, and so do that, and then if, and it's not set in stone so that you're not able to move from one status to the other, but it sounds like an employment status. Not only is it what we've been doing, Ms. Lawson is right, since way back, I think before even Ms. Roberts.
Two thousand and three, two thousand and four.
Yeah. Not only has it been done as an employment position, but in order to control the activities the way I think you're gonna wanna control them, I think it would also be good from that standpoint, that's probably more accurate, is to call it an employment position.
What I'd like to see is define one other thing out to see how this works, because when I was first on the board, we hired, Chris came on shortly after that, as I recall, that was the way it happened. And there was an emergency meeting called, Chris was hired during that emergency meeting. I was not present at it. I was sort of a little put out in the way things went because I wasn't part of it. But if, I also didn't like the manager being the secretary and the treasurer. I don't think those jobs should be held by one person. And Tuscan seems to say the same thing, that they need to be separated. You mentioned it a minute ago about if we have a manager and the manager can't bake something and they have other members in their family, can the other members in the family, if asked by the manager, go look at something for them? What does, where does that put us? You know, my dispute earlier was that it wasn't identified and it wasn't talked about and didn't know who was doing what.
Right. So with an employee, you are hiring the person, it is the person who is the employee. It is the person who receives the W-2, it is the person who would sign the employment agreement or whatever you do in the future. They are the ones who have the responsibilities. It's a little bit different when you have an employee because the employee is the one. Where with an independent contractor, like with Mr. Edenfield's firm or with me, the one, you hire me, you hire my firm, I'm an independent contractor, if I'm not able to get there, if Mr. Edenfield is not able to get there, if Tony's Lawn Mowing Service, if Tony's not able to do the job itself.
He sends out.
He sends out his employees to take care of the work for you. That's one of the distinctions between an independent contractor and an employee. The main focus, I think, of what you want to accomplish is that you want to have, where now Ms. Lawson is the secretary treasurer and trying to wear a bunch of different hats of dividing that work effort into two essentially employment positions, so that you have a manager and that manager, but that manager is the one, that manager is the person. The overseer is a separate title authorized by the statute to be hired by the board in addition to the manager. It may be something in the future that you may wanna look at doing, but I think right now, the first transition step is hire the manager and say to the manager, this is your job description, you've gotta get this done. One way or the other, you've gotta get this done. I think that's generally...
You used a word there that was vague. One way or another, you have to get this done. That was, they use latitude for making a decision that getting your job done is what's important, whether you send me to go do it when you're not present. Is that open or not open?
I, technically, I don't see that as being open because you are hiring the person as an employee, not an independent contractor.
Let me ask you a question, clarify something. Chris, right now, are you doing any responsibilities that would be deemed manager or supervisor?
Yes, in the sense that when I get a call or from Tony or anybody, I go out and take a look at what...
So some of your time is being allocated?
Yes, very little, very...
Part-time.
Yeah.
So I propose that whoever the managers would be hired, if they're running and having a problem getting something done, the first line of defense is call you.
Yes.
Second line of defense is call one of the supervisors.
Yes.
Then after that, if no one can go look at this inspection at three thirty or whatever, then we'll figure out if we need this overseer. I personally, I think if you get caught in the weeds, I'd like to just get into interviewing the candidate.
So with the point being, with the point being, so, yes, I agree. If you hire the manager and then you say in the secretary treasurer's position, your first responsibility and obligation is to be the secretary treasurer, but in addition to that, if the manager superintendent is not able to do the function, then your second line of effort would be another part of the job description would be like the fallback.
And quite frankly, vice versa.
Yeah.
Because I think...
I think with the backup.
You could help.
That's right. And so it would be, so...
It's a team effort.
Yes, and so the employment-related topic mattered to it all is, if these are the two employees, then it would be between them, not the third person. That's the point that I'm making, is there's not a third or fourth or fifth person unless you say, I wanna have a overseer. You wanna have...
I think we need to move forward.
But I have a quick question too.
Go ahead.
Regarding the employee to the 1099 situation. If you designate certain hours, this doesn't seem to be a ninety-five job. You go out on the weekends, you get calls in the evenings, there's a wreck on the road and it, you know, in the swale, like, so I do see that great area of it being like not definitive either.
The way the policy procedure rating for employees, if you're an employee, full or part-time, the responsibilities are at the behest of the board.
Okay, understood.
Yes, and I think it's...
Okay. Hi, I'm Mike, of course, and...
Mike who?
Bradford. Okay. And of course, I've worked for the board doing things, so is it possible that she could call me in those scenarios?
Sure.
Just as the third person, you know, when you come across an issue? And I don't know what the response there would be, but...
Okay, I think we need to hash that out later. I'd really appreciate it, but we really need to get on with the interview.
Do they apply?
And I see that you've still got one person that said he might want to apply.
Are we advertising this position?
We already did. It's been advertised in the papers.
Really? At the last meeting, you were talking about meeting to talk on the job.
And we've been talking about it for a year and a half here, and we announced at the meetings that Jennifer Finazzo would be the person, the contact person for anybody interested, and that one person contacted. So that's where we stand today. So with all due respect, we've been trying to find somebody for a year and a half. Is that correct, Chris, or about a year and a half?
We are just now at twelve months.
Yeah.
And...
Okay.
Honestly.
Twelve months.
And this was a special meeting called for the purpose of doing the selection, describing the job description and also doing the selection.
Again, which was announced again at the last meeting. And at the previous meetings, we've talked about it, if you look at the minutes, it should be in every seven minutes.
So at the last meeting, you'd already made the decision?
No.
No.
No. No, we, that was open for anybody out there that wanted to show up for that.
You told us outside there that you were gonna hire her.
She applied for it.
I was indicating when I talked to you and David Nagy after the last meeting, that she was the only person that had put in an application. Standing there, I would have to think that she was going to be, if met the standards of the board, would be that applicant. I was not indicating that we had already hired anybody or that this board had never talked about her being hired.
You're misunderstanding that.
And I cannot, and I always try to address because when I'm talking to them, I'm one person, I can make no decisions by myself. And I think you heard me say that the other night when I was talking.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be a front, that's, if you disagree with me, please dis... Okay. I'm subject to making mistakes and not being...
Well, I maybe I didn't hear you, probably.
Okay. All right, so with that, we do need to move forward with reviewing Audrey. So Chris or Jennifer, you were the person assigned to do this, would you like to take over at this point?
Okay, so they, I guess I don't have a schedule to do.
I've got some notes here if you want me to...
Go ahead, go ahead, continue with your notes.
Okay.
I have notes here, but...
If it's okay with the board, then let's, you've already got a resume. I'm gonna, I've got a couple of questions I would just like to ask her, and then you guys be prepared to ask her a few questions. And mine is, why do you want this job?
Well, thank you, Mr. Bradford. I'm applying for this job because this is my community, my community has a need and I have the qualifications. I wanna serve my community and I wanna do a good job, I have integrity that I need to serve our community that people would appreciate.
You do understand you're working at the will of the board and you take this job?
Yes, I do.
Any month, we can say, adios and you're gone.
I understand that.
Okay.
No hard feelings.
The other question that I would have for you, could you explain some of your background and qualifications that you apply that you have?
For sixteen years, I have single-handedly managed multiple rental units, screening tenants and resolving issues, repairs, dealing with contractors, making sure that I even hold back money if need be because something was not correctly performed to specifications.
Did you ever have to deal with code enforcement or outside agencies?
I have not. However, that is something that I can easily learn. I'm very bright and I pick up quickly, so if there are other entities that need to be involved, I have no problem collaborating with those other entities to make sure that we're in compliance with those requirements.
One of the things that I'm very much into is the fact that the government's offering a lot of grant money, et cetera, for independent boards like this. And because I personally feel that we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be brought up to date, including the fact that the hurricane left us with a lot of damage and stuff, that I would want to know that you're capable of working with FEMA, but FEMA should be pretty much handled, but grant monies and stuff like that, you feel comfortable with being able to sit and write grants?
I feel very comfortable to sit and write grants and fill out the applications and submit them prior to deadline and making sure that San Carlos Estates Control Water District has an opportunity to maintain its right of way and keep things up to par.
Okay, because I'm very much on trying to operate this district at the lowest cost we can to the people out here, but we found out in this past couple of years that we have a lot of outside sources dumping into our system. And we're needing to go find out about getting additional monies from surrounding communities to subsidize us for that. We've got some nine hundred people out here that's holding the whole bag right now. So that's why, that's gonna be a big part of what, from my point of view, what I'm gonna want you to be doing.
Sure, I'm comfortable to do that.
Okay. Jonathan?
Go ahead, Jonathan, and I'll do spec. And I've had multiple conversations with Audrey, so...
So I see your...
I identify her qualifications.
I see basically your resume, you're a registered nurse, so thank you for particularly using your help with the veterans. So let's do a little scenario planning. You have a regular job as a nurse. It appears you go to the VA facility, oh. What's your normal schedule? Are you in a position where it is a more predictable time slot you go into that you'll be able to manage the responsibilities, or is it more like sometimes your night shifts, sometimes your day shifts? So my first question is, what is your current normal full-time job timeframe? And then how's that gonna balance out with most of the people that are supporting the board here are doing their jobs normally, doing the work that usually Monday through Friday? Sometimes there's some weekend issues. So explain to me how you think you're gonna balance that time out?
Sure, my tour of duty is eight to four thirty, and then I'm home usually by five. I do, and I appreciate Mr. Bradford offering to assist if I'm unable to be there on occasion. I do work telehealth, so sometimes I am home during the day. So you might get lucky if I'm home during the day to, you know, sometimes I won't be able to, and I will need to reach out to somebody for assistance.
So my big concern is gonna be, a good portion of your responsibilities will be to lower our operating costs by interacting with contractors, subcontractors, people doing work in the right way. And I would assume that most of that, those guys are gonna be seven thirty to three thirty, even four, four thirty. So if the engineering firm sends you an email, say, check one, two, three Baker Street, and look at how they put in the piping, the best you're gonna get is you're gonna go there at five o'clock.
No.
How do you...
I'm very early, so I'm at five o'clock in the morning, I can be...
So if you check, so if you check in the morning before you go to becoming a nurse, and the contractor's not there for you to tell them, stop work because it's not installed correctly, we could be going all day, trucks comes, dumps all the stone in, and then we find out it's not, it's not correct.
I understand.
So, you know, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, how are you gonna do this job if there's no time during the workday because you're locked into your normal schedule?
Well, respectfully, from my understanding, that there's, it's not a very frequent occasion where this happens. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
I wouldn't say that.
So please...
We have forty-two properties currently under permit.
Correct, and I would like to know, if you don't mind, how often something like this arises?
We get calls, one or two a week for final inspection.
We get calls, uh, one or two a week for file inspections or for an inspection. The compliance issues, I think, are really more in line with what, uh, we're talking about here. Those are a little less regular, one month maybe. We do have follow-ups that, that need to occur. You know, once one goes into the compliance, it's pretty much every, every week or when we're here, we'll go through and check on the status of those. So it's, it's regular, but not frequent.
So just, just so you know, I'm in very good standing with her, Matt, and I do have any belief that I can use if I need to do something. That is an option, and I'm in very good standing with my manager. And at any given time, I could say, hey, I need, um, an hour or two, and it would be granted because I'm in good standing with them.
Okay, I don't want you jeopardizing your regular job.
No.
Because there's, there's issues, you have to go to Beneath Springs, there's issues, maybe you have to go to, um, FGCU, talk to people about the water, you might have to during the day, contact some people for maybe, is this more expecting the supervisors to, uh, attend FEMA meetings?
When we're doing those.
But, but that is normally supervisor's job.
Exactly.
I've been filling in ever since the hurricane, so with all due respect, that's part of what the manager, that's why I implied that after storms and stuff like that, it becomes more intense. And as much as that may not happen on a real regular basis, you need to be, that's something that has to be built into your thought process of taking this job.
I'm not saying you can't do the job, I don't know. I haven't seen you in action. Now, one of the things that Jennifer has put down here is the responsibility. I don't know how long this will take, but it says here, successfully met all requirements of qualified inspector, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Department. I've talked with Ron, there is a program, I guess it's online, there's a training program, you can search, but I would think one of the first things you would have to do is get that training certification so you understand what you're looking for in the swells and the weird and everything else.
Yeah, it is online.
So I, I did go online, I saw that this morning, looking at some of the old agendas. And I found that qualification, uh, hold on a second. Yes, for the Stormwater Erosion and Settlement Control Inspection Training Program. It's a two-day program, and, uh, one would have to apply for it, it would be my first priority.
Yeah. I have a question for Chris. What, what training efforts would you have time to impart upon new supervisor? Whoever they are? To explain the operational aspects, because you've been wearing multiple hats, so that their job gets faster and easier, and you have time for that?
She's gonna have a, a learning curve, obviously. Um, and that learning curve, I think, is going to be in part deemed, this, the steepness of it will be deemed by the expectations of the board as to, in my opinion, the demands of the, of the engineering, uh, aspects of, of what you might be asking her to do. If you are asking her to go and look at it, culvert inspections and, and do that in lieu of Ron's doing that, then I think there needs to be some training by Ron for her to, to have a, a good understanding. And so there is, that, that's a learning curve I have no experience with. There is gonna be other le, learning curves associated with it, and yes, I figure we would work together and, and figure out a schedule and a time that was convenient to both of us to, to do that. I had some thoughts as to how to first approach this, um, position to get her up to speed by focusing on the manager job itself initially, and all that that would encompass based on what the board would want her to do, and, and then ease into whatever else there is.
Well, I would make a suggestion that we, as a board, particularly the engineering firm, come up with a, a, a workflow, list of check, like a checklist of activities that this person would have to do. Because quite frankly, um, doing sixteen years of property management, mostly probably residential apartments, the construction language, the things you, the issues you're gonna look for are gonna be completely different than what is basically civil engineering issues and environmental, your engineering issues out here.
Excellent, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to learn this stuff and I'm, and I'm hungry to learn.
But that's a learning curve, and that is a. The question is really gonna be, it sounds like you believe you have the aptitude. Proof's gonna be in the pudding if you demonstrate that you actually have that aptitude and you can apply it. Because if the engineering firm actually puts more time in beyond, say, a month or two of helping you get up on that learning curve, then it's basically, it's a waste of money.
I agree.
Okay, that's my thoughts for now.
Sure. But that's time well spent. Anything, that, that would be time well spent, that would pay off dividends down the road.
Correct, and I also think regardless of it's you or anybody else, maybe you don't wanna do this after a few years, if we put together a basic checklist, almost a training manual for whoever this supervisor is, that in and of itself, this exercise is worth doing that.
Well, certainly this is, this is for this board, an awkward position to try to say exactly what a manager's gonna do. Because we don't, we don't, nobody really knows. But I think we can put, like we've done in other manuals, John, I think we can write the manual as we go. And, and, and I think that we, if we choose to move forward, we move forward with an expectation that we move forward from this day till the end of our budget year, reevaluate the position at that point, and determine if everything that we're, our expectations are being met. And if not, we may have to look for another employee. I'm, I'm not, uh, I, I, I know what I want out of it, I know what the community needs out of it. And if we have a person that's willing to step up and do that and learn the process and, you know, you only got one way you can go there, you're gonna, gonna have to put them in there. And a lot of manager jobs are that way, you're hiring people from the outside, they haven't done that kind of work exactly before, and you have to go through a training program with them at some point. But it depends on whether they jump in. I got hired one time to be an assistant furniture, and I got thrown the keys to the door and said, this is your job, do it. And I had to learn it on the run. And of course, I was willing to step up and do everything I needed to, and that lasted me sixteen years, so.
So Jim, just for that, I do honestly, I do not believe that four to six months is a sufficient timeframe for whoever does this job to be fully competent.
I didn't expect them to be fully competent, I was like.
But we're looking for progress.
If there's two steps forward and one step back, but there's forward progress between now and here, then that's okay.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna set this, we're sitting here a year from now doing what we're doing today. If, if she's doing her, if, if it's her, if it turns out you jump up, okay? Or you, Mike, but the point being is that whoever that person is today, and they're willing to do the job and they say they're going to do it, I just don't wanna wait six months to find out whether or not they're treading water or whether they're moving forward. And if they have the skill level and they have the enthusiasm and the effort they wanna put into it, I can tell you, I stepped on this board almost three years ago now, and I had a woman stand up out in the crowd, and she says, why in the heck are you on this board? You don't know anything about it. Well, unfortunately, I'm sitting here as the chair today. So, uh, and she seems to think I'm doing a pretty good job. So I must be doing something right, but she was right, I knew nothing about it. But I most certainly jumped in with both feet and did everything I could to learn it and to try to bring about for this community the best that I could. And I know it's not all been perfect, but I'm most certainly willing to change every moment of the day to make it better.
Well, and one thing too, is the meeting that we had together identified a lot of the details of the position, you know, as far as like secretary, facility of records and minutes, treasurer, account, payable receivables audit, and then everything else leading down to the manager being website, phone calls, inspections, um, port potties, right-of-way, tractors permitting, unper, unpermitted letters and violations, district phone. So like even just in that meeting, we identified a big degree of the differences or what areas of the positions do kind of, um, you know, overlap.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may also add.
You may.
I, I, I believe that since you've not had the second position for some time, uh, at the district, the initial time period is not only going to be an opportunity for the employee to learn what they are supposed to be doing, but also for the board to learn what the employee is also supposed to be doing. And so your job description that you approve at the beginning will probably have some modifications to it, uh, in the early stages so that not only will the employee, uh, be changing, but the job description will be as well. So eventually, the goal would be to have a, a, a job description that fits the work that you want to accomplish so that the employee understands what they're supposed to be doing from the job description. This person will understand what they are supposed to be doing just from the give and take. But the next person, whenever that happens, would need the job description to be.
Okay, I think we all got that and we're all in compliance with that. So at, at this point, does the board members or Mr. Edinburgh have any other questions? And I'm going to ask, just so we know, are there anybody else in this room sitting here today that wants this job?
No, I'm retired, I'm just kidding.
I'm retired too, and I didn't want this one. So at any rate, this is where we sit today, and I'm gonna put a vote before the board based on the information, uh, that we have to hire, I'm gonna tell, announce your last name.
Would you like for me to help you?
Yes, I agree.
Maderas.
Maderas. As a, as the manager of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District, with the fact that you will have a review by the first of the year, determining where we're going from there, and that you also understand that you work at the will of the board. So even before that period of time, if the board determined that you were not a fit for what we're doing, the board would have a right at a meeting to vote you out.
Excellent.
The motion's on the floor.
I second the motion with a caveat that says, within thirty days, you'll have a job, outline of what your expectations are. So that within thirty days, the engineering firm will show you the basics of what they expect you to do. And in the same thirty days, you do this online training program.
Okay.
Then if that's the case, and you agree to those terms, I second the motion.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Aye.
You're gonna hire.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have, you have, yeah, salary.
Go ahead.
Salary, salary.
That's, that's what's gonna be next. Did we officially?
Did you have to clarify?
No, sir, you did not.
Did, did we really, did we ever rehire you back? Did we determine we were going, you said you wanted the job, I don't remember whether we.
No, you know, we haven't, you know, we haven't done me.
I think we need to put a motion on the floor.
Yep.
To hire Chris.
Not so on temporary.
Now, she might turn us down when she hears the salary, I don't.
I put a motion on the floor to engage Chris officially as treasurer and secretary.
Secretary of Treasury, okay.
Secretary of Treasury.
Second that.
Aye, motion carries. Do you accept that position, Chris?
Yes.
You wanna know what the salary is?
It's your supply of publicum.
Your supply of publicum.
We let you come to the meetings.
And water is free.
Okay, if the, what I'm looking at here is our budget is outlined for fifty-five thousand dollars for the year for salaries and.
Actually, it's not, it's more than that, but.
If you have a question or a report here, I don't have nowhere else to look.
That was prior year.
Okay.
That was the, fifty thousand was the salary that I was hired in at, in twenty, August of twenty twenty-one to do the three positions.
Okay.
Last year at the budget, at the budget meeting, the, uh, positions were forty-eight thousand and twenty-four thousand, um, for a total of seventy-two thousand. Is that right? Forty-eight?
Yes.
Twenty-four, for the, for the, for the two positions.
As long as we've got the money, I'll be able to put the motion on the floor to make the manager's salary set at thirty-eight thousand dollars and the secretary treasurer's job set at twenty-two thousand.
That's sixty, that's seventy-two.
That's correct, we have room for movement.
Okay, but my question is if it's a set budget for that type of position or like Tony's Landscape, it's a set budget? Do there, and, and I'm not spending the, you know, the community's money, but if you have that budget for that position, does it need to be applied to that position?
No.
And then if there's a future review of like an increase, then it's a projected increase on the following year's budget?
It gives us, if you don't use it at this point, we can use it for any other salary application we choose. And the fact that it can be applied, um, if we chose in September to get pay increases, we could do that.
And I would also say that actual budget dollars that allocate in the overall budget, some of that money's gonna have to be spent with extra time with Ron's firm, creating the works, uh, activities list. You need some training, you have a learning curve, and I don't expect you to start at a given full salary, especially because you have a lot of issues that have to be addressed in your learning curve. So I agree with Chairman Bradford's initial proposal.
I would like to negotiate.
What?
I would like to negotiate. There's gonna be time that I'm gonna have to spend with Audrey, getting her up to speed over the next four to six months in, in the training of the job. I think the treasurer, secretary job is at a minimum twenty-four thousand, which is half of what I was being paid previously with the expectation that I would have received a increase in, at the, at the end of twelve months in August of, September of twenty twenty-two to something that would have been more representative than what Julia had been receiving at the time, um, that did not occur. So my suggestion and my negotiation is that at this stage, that that job, that the, during the time that we are doing the training between now and the end of the fiscal year, that my position get paid three thousand dollars a month, which is less than what I've been currently making. Um, and then at the end of the fiscal year, if you choose to continue me on as in the position, then that we settle at twenty-four thousand. Because the training would have been completed at that point.
You want to continue your salary as it was?
No, reduce.
No, reduce, twenty-four thousand.
After the fiscal year?
At, at, in November, yes. But that would be something we discussed at the time.
Considering the transition of time, and so I would put a vote on the table if that's okay for the next four months, five months.
Because we're gonna be working close.
So what is the salary that you're asking for monthly or for, uh?
Current, I'm currently getting right now.
Day out, what would that be?
Three thousand.
Thirty thousand?
Three thousand a month.
Three thousand a month, which would be how much a year?
Thirty-six thousand.
Towards the, till the end of the fiscal year, and then at that point, my train, her training should be complete for the position.
It's gonna go to two thousand a month.
And then it'll go down to two thousand.
I understand that, when you, when they, a year ago, when they divided up the, and the supervisors took the manager's position, you never lost any income, you continued on with that.
And I continued performing the position.
She's been wearing two hats, so.
But so has the board.
Yeah, the board, the board took a huge.
They took a huge portion, and there was no adjustment on the, it only has the landlord, I'm saying that, there was no adjustment.
No, there was not any adjustment.
I know that I spent a lot of hours.
I, I don't disagree, you, you all took on a huge burden.
No pay at all, so.
No.
And I do it because this is my community, so.
That's just my proposal.
Well, I gotta go, so I wanna conclude from my meeting. Wanna vote on that or not?
You wanna counter on that?
Okay, I'd like to counter it.
All right.
Okay, so you, you were wanting thirty, you were wanting thirty-six thousand a year to continue.
For four months.
For four months.
So you have, right now, you're gonna want an additional four thousand dollars.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 look here, the math, simple math, three thousand versus two thousand, four months, three thousand.
Yeah.
That's four thousand dollars more. Split the difference.
I'll, I'll go with that.
Split the difference for the next four months, because you had.
That's fine.
Okay, that's what I voted on. Second?
Second.
Okay.
Just on paper. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Edinburgh.
The meeting hasn't been adjourned yet? I've gotta go.
Have a good day.
Yes, sir. Any comments from the audience?
So what was the final decree?
We have the final number on the, on the salaries? We have a final number on the, on the salaries? We did, we split the difference between you wanted, what we offered.
Yeah, that's twenty, that's, you were saying twenty-two, I was, I said two, which is twenty-four. I asked for three, we get to twenty-five. You split the difference, which is twenty-five.
Okay, that's what you agreed on.
Twenty-five a month.
Yes, with the difference.
All right.
That's what you agreed on.
That's fine.
For four months.
For four months, and then.
And then, and then, and then you're gonna go down to twenty-four. And, so then you're gonna cut a hundred dollars off. I think the training time will be more than a hundred dollars, but that's okay. I'm giving, I'm willing to give it.
I think they catch on good.
You got all right.
I'm positive.
Okay, now, the meeting has not been adjourned yet. So I did ask the audience if they had any questions.
Would you want that for your file?
Okay. Mr. Pringle, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so what we've talked a lot about, and you've, you've got two employees hired, you've offered and they've accepted. We've got job duties and responsibilities here that are written, and I've heard one addition to the manager's position, which I would call manager slash superintendent of plant and operations position, so that you're in line with the statute. But also heard added to that description, the search for, prepare, and pursue grant applications for grants that will benefit the district and interact with grant providers and grant administrators, those were my words. But I, I heard that topic.
That's the topic.
Okay.
And, and et cetera, et cetera, because that'll grow and change as, as the grants and, and available monies do.
And, you know, there'll be times when the monies from the surrounding communities are gonna have to be sought after, so. The, the job duties and responsibilities that are described here, I would want to, I would like to add to them references to the statutes that apply to the two positions. So if you, would you like, it sounded like these job duties and responsibilities were, were generally adopted, approved, although you did not take official action to do that.
They weren't on the basis that we can add to and take away on a daily basis if we choose to do that until we finally come up with what we determine to be a more rounded.
Complete.
Operating.
Based on.
We're not gonna know that to whoever the manager is, and we see how much is being covered, how much is being done, and whether or not we hit the right mark. There might, might be we didn't make it, maybe we didn't do it right. Maybe we'll have to come back there and reevaluate in six months or a year. And as much as I'm not downing Audrey, it doesn't matter who's sitting there, the thing is, it doesn't matter who we hired for a manager today or where they came from, if they, if they don't meet the qualifications that are, or should I say, our expectations of what we need out here, and with the growth and stuff, then change is in order. But we'll have to see how that goes.
Right. And, and ultimately with, with government agencies, the question is, the, is the employee the best fit for the job? And if the answer to that is yes, then the employee is continues, that, that individual continues to be in the position. If not, then you have to figure out what is in the best interest of the dis, of the district. So what I was leading up to was, these job duties, do, do you want them to be further rounded out and brought back to the board for the board to say, "Yep, that looks good with those additions, and this is what we're gonna use going forward," and then the board's gonna modify over the next six to twelve months?
I, I think, I think the way that we need to do this is we need to simply take what we have here today and add to it the Florida statutes, et cetera, which draw in the other qualifications and, and what the manager is supposed to be doing in any water management district. We need to approve that, but that also needs to have a caveat at the end of it that says that it will be changed on a regular basis as per the board's.
Soul discretion.
So that way, we're not sitting here with an open-ended document for the next six months, not, not applying.
Okay.
And Jim, there's some things on here that I can, I would like to make suggestions on.
Yes.
That, that may or may not be currently in play, that were historically in play. So we have some just tweaking.
Okay.
Like I said, that is a work in progress, because that's the job duty description.
Yeah.
And the manager themselves might have input as to what they see as they're moving forward. And that can happen from day one till hopefully the end of, a few years down the road, or ten years down the road, to the day they choose not to do it anymore.
And then I'd like to bring up something regarding equipment costs and things that we need to vote on or address, Mr. Pringle, regarding like updated, better updated equipment, then obviously needing two forms of that, and then where we're keeping records and.
Referring to updated equipment.
Like the computer.
She, okay, Audrey's gonna need.
Just pull it home, Mr. Pringle, do we, as we're completing this portion of this, you did leave the meeting open-ended for further discussion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I don't wanna be crossing over, so let's finish this, and then let's talk about that. So are we done with anything else to do with job descriptions? Is there anybody, I'm gonna ask anybody out here who's had managerial experience if they have any input at this point?
No.
Okay, then.
So we're gonna work on.
It's in your hands, and we expect.
Our hands collectively.
Yes, we need to complete it, we need you to complete that, so we can move on.
We need motions to adopt everything, right?
This was, so just to make sure that we have clarity, there was a motion to approve the manager, Ms. Maderas, that passed and the salary was set. There was a motion to approve the secretary and the treasurer as being Ms. Lawson at a salary, and that was approved. And.
Yes, we have improved the job.
And the job descriptions, you want us to bring those back after we've pulled them all together real tight and, and present them to you at the next board meeting, is that? And until then, they're gonna, everybody's gonna work off of what's here.
That's fine.
And, and, and work it on.
I want a finished document for the next board meeting to be signed.
All right, so you need a motion to do that.
Okay. Put a motion on, on the floor, Mr. Pringle, and any other means that he needs, Supervisor Filazzo and Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
To complete the documents for the manager's position and to bring it to the other board, to the next board meeting to be signed.
The job description, yes, sir.
Second that.
All right, motion passes. Mr. Slushy being absent. Okay, now that this is done and completed, any other questions from you?
Oh, no, I wanna know when I'm gonna see him next.
Okay, that could, that you can discuss after the board meeting.
All right, to me.
Okay.
Equipment.
Equipment, yes.
You're up. You were asking a question about a computer.
Yeah, and well, or is this gonna be when they meet the first time and then bring to the board what they're going to propose to need for her to do her position?
She's gonna need a full office set up.
We're gonna, we're gonna need an officer, including the phone.
Yeah, computer, printer.
Well, I think we had already kinda talked about the phone aspect, and that I'm just gonna forward the phone, keep the phone line at my house and forward it to her line, to her telephone, as opposed to having her get a second line brought into the house and have that added cost.
Okay.
That, that's not a big deal. We'll just change the, the phone forward when we're ready to do that.
Okay, there's some other little things real quick, and they probably didn't need to be rough today, but I am. But I've got the old gates and stuff at my house, I brought it up at the last board meeting, I don't remember a motion being put on the floor to sell those items or to allow, giving me the authority to do so. So old items that are, the old signs and things like that, I would like to have permission to put them on a governmental agency, which is all up to par on how government agencies sell things, to be able to sell, they're, they're put out to bits.
Okay, so we'd have to add that to the agenda.
We can either.
Or we can do it next month, or like in two weeks.
Getting tired of being in the yard, but anyway, yeah, that'll.
I'll put it on the April seventeenth agenda, how's that?
And, and the way to do that will be to first declare them a surplus property and then to provide for their disposal, that's, and then that'll.
Those are new procedures for us? But there are little things this water control district's gonna have to look for in the future. Mike goes out and spends a lot of time digging holes in hard soil out here, and when places like Harbor Free have little post hole diggers that for four hundred dollars, you can own one, but that, that's an item we're gonna own, okay? There'll be a day when it's added out.
Added to the inventory.
The next thing's gonna come back to storage of those items.
Yes, sir, so.
You know, there's gonna have to be at some point a facility for storing them.
Right, right.
I've got all the fence poles and pieces on the back of my property right now. And it's not that I really might be doing that, but it is one of those things that.
Right.
I'm not gonna want forever.
Right.
So.
Right.
So either we're gonna have to figure out for rent to be paid to whoever's doing it or something down the road.
Some facility, yes, sir.
I mean, we could, we could hire a stor, you could go into a storage unit and put that stuff.
Pardon?
You could open up a storage unit and put that stuff in.
You can, and then you might want to discover how long it takes Mike to drive there, but. It might be cheaper to pay somebody in the community to have it on their property, have things like that on their property. It's just things we need to think about, the days, things are changing. And so you need to go, take off.
Am I allowed to go?
I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, when you go, we have no more.
I know, I was gonna say.
So you need to second that, and we're done.
I second that.
And the time is?
The time would be.
Eleven oh one.
Eleven oh one.